Good morning, welcome to the June 11th 2020 business meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Gary for a roll call.
Thank you Chair. First, our staff support today is Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call today, Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
With that, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are holding this meeting virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in writing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of writing your comment to us live, or you can send in a comment to be read during the citizen communication portion of our meeting, or during a hearing via email. Just send it at any time during the meeting by emailing clacko news@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you live. And we're going to turn it over to Gary. Gary?
Yes, Chair. We'll start with COVID-19 updates. And to begin, we have Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander for our Emergency Operations Center, along with Dr. Sarah President, who is our Clackamas County Health Officer, who actually has just accepted the position as Public Health Medical Director for Clackamas County, because believe it or not, she was splitting her time, part-time at the county and part-time at another county, but now she is formerly all ours at Clackamas County. So congratulations, Sarah President. We're thrilled you accepted, and look forward to that. So, sorry Nancy, I had to throw that in.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. And yes, Dr. President, we're really glad to have you full-time now. We may be not two full-time jobs anymore.
No, the same job, just, just, just a different administrative.
Okay, so to start with our numbers this morning, we in Oregon, there's 5,060 positives. That's up 72 from yesterday. There's 169 deaths, 151,698 negatives. Clackamas County has 399 positives, that is up 6. There are 13 deaths, and we have 14,284 negatives. And Multnomah County is, has 1,361 positives, 66 deaths, 32,137 negatives. Washington County has 813 positives, 18 deaths, 20,416 negatives. Just to catch up on a few things going on here in the EOC, Public Health is bringing on 15 new staff, and also doing two internal county transfers. Those are all underway. And just to remind everyone that there's at least a two-week training period for that staff before they're ready to do the jobs that they've been hired for. We have a food box event today, which is at 91 School, and they have around 600 boxes to give away at that particular event. So if you know anyone that has that need, please let them know. The applications for our rental assistance dollars at $2.8 million was approved and sent to the state by noon today, or on Wednesday, and I think Gary is going to talk about that a little bit more later. Our Behavioral Health Go Teams had three events yesterday, and we continue to have a lot of requests for those Go Teams. So we have been adding also people to the Go Teams, and we do have Go Teams that are multilingual as well. Our recovery planning, as you recall, it seems like forever ago, but it was about a month ago, we had given you some suggestions on recovery and where we need to go and how we need to put that together. So we're working on another document. Hopefully, I'll be able to give it to you next week to talk about recovery planning once again, and hopefully get a committee or a policy group put together that is inclusive, working with EDI and other lenses that we want to make sure that's added to that. So we're looking forward to talking about that. So lastly, we're going to talk about Phase Two, and Dylan is going to bring up a document for me. So just briefly, I'm going to introduce this document, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. President to talk about Phase Two and what this document means. But we do have a document up that has several weeks worth of data here. We just wanted to show you kind of the trends over the last few weeks. Excuse me. And so we, what came in, this is not on the public site yet for OHA. I think they're going to have it up by noon today. But you will see that we do have an uptrend here with percent of tests that resulted positive in the last seven days. And that is a red check mark now, that we're not meeting that. And this increase should not be more than 5%. And the last seven days is now 191%. So we did go down in this category, a percent of cases not traced to known last source. So that has went down, which is really good for Clackamas County, the 13%. We have a downtrend here in hospitalizations. And we did, though, we're still meeting the measure of the cases that have been followed up on in 24 hours, but it has went down 98%, down from 100%. And I just want to also point out, like throughout this document, we're seeing a lot of increases, like Klasik County, there's a 2,100% increase. And some of the others, yeah, Dylan, if you don't mind, just going down a little bit further too. So, but if you look at that column, you're seeing, we're seeing a lot of increases in the state, in this particular column, statewide. And if you were reading the media over the weekend, it was the highest count in the state, as well as Clackamas County, over the weekend as well. So, Dr. President, I'm going to turn it over to you to discuss some particulars about the numbers, and where we are with Phase Two and our recommendations.
Thank you. And thank you, Dylan, for keeping that up on the screen. We spoke last week about sort of the interaction between that third and fourth column, the percent of cases being traced to a known source, and the increase in new cases in the last seven days. So, you know, I talked last week about how there may be, we expect to see some sort of kind of teeter tottering of those two columns, right? So we do have a significant increase in cases, and a lot of those are associated with known outbreaks that we're working on. So the 13% is down, the 191% clearly is way up. We've had a lot of cases in the last few weeks, and most of them are associated with known outbreaks. So just to give you a sense of what we're, what we're working on in the Public Health Department, in the last two weeks, and this is, these are approximate numbers, because it's always a moving, a moving target and moving number, but in the last two weeks, we've had about 130 new cases, just in the last two weeks. Around 20 of them were associated with the outbreak at Bob's Red Mill, which has been in the, in the news, and has, has continued, but in an expected way. And I just want to say that Bob's is working really closely with us. They're doing a great job of controlling and putting in all the control measures in place that they need to. At this point, there are just some known expected spreads from prior cases to, say, family members or other contacts, or other contacts that, that were sort of identified before a lot of control measures were put in place. So I don't have, I'd like to say that Bob's Red Mill is doing a really good job. We also have a long-term care facility that, in the last two weeks, we've had about 60 new cases. If you see the case counts that will come out later today, I think about 40 of them came in yesterday. So our new case counts from OHA on the news release will be, will be very high today. And so we, we know that, and I want you to anticipate that. And a lot of them are due to a facility-wide testing at one of our long-term care facilities. There were some positives noted based on screening of residents and staff with mild symptoms. And then with the facility-wide testing, we have been very lucky with this long-term care facility, and that there are few severe illnesses, very few hospitalizations, no deaths. Most people have mild illness, which is wonderful. But amongst the residents, there's, the majority of them are testing positive, whether they have symptoms or not. Amongst the staff, it's at least a third of them are testing positive, whether they have symptoms or not. So there's clear spread amongst both residents and staff, and clear spread from, from staff elsewhere as well. Back to, and again, that facility working closely with us, they're doing a fantastic job of implementing control measures. Everybody's working really hard to keep everybody safe. Other, other outbreaks that have been reported by the media of being five people or more associated with a work site, we have the Marquee Hope Village Long-Term Care Facility, Bob's Red Mill, the Oak Grove Fred Meyer, Carmen Oaks. Again, the Carmen Oaks was a long-term care facility with some facility-wide testing, and a lot of their positives are asymptomatic staff who are working there. And Dave's Killer Bread, which was prior, that's not very active at this point. So those are the ones that have been reported. We have a number of smaller outbreaks in foster homes, long-term care facilities, and three other restaurants that have popped up in the last few, few weeks. Back to that 130 cases in the last two weeks, about a third of them are not associated with an outbreak. So it is sort of sporadic community cases. And so the, so both are happening. But our huge jump in numbers is primarily related to the two, two big outbreaks that we're working on. I think that all of this just makes me want to reiterate how, how well things go when people work with us, and do take the recommendations seriously, both employers and individuals. We do have, we have had a number of our cases in the last several days who have 20 to 30 contacts that we have to follow up on. So we do have evidence that people are having, you know, we have some spread from Memorial Day barbecue that have happened, some group gatherings. We really just encourage people to try to limit interactions with high-risk people, really try to keep social distancing recommendations, really try to keep face coverings on if you're in, in large groups, or people who are not your household contacts, and really work with Public Health, because that's the only way that we are going to actually be able to identify and control these outbreaks. I do want to tell you that we've had some, some cases and residents who do not want to name their contacts. We are not going to go to their house and, and require that of them. But it really helps us do the work to protect our whole community and move into further reopening if people do let us know who their contacts are, so we can ensure that they have their needs met in order to quarantine, and that we can identify cases early. The, the partnership that needs to happen between Public Health Department and the community here, I just want to keep encouraging everybody to, to work with us, so that we can help our whole community stay safe and get back to a normal. And I will stop there. Thanks.
Mary, I tried to raise my hand. I don't seem to have a place where I can do that. So I'm going to ask Dr. President a question. You know, we're waiting to apply for Phase Two. We still fail in at least one area now, right?
Yes.
Two, two still. And some counties have applied, even though they were still failing, and they were allowed to open. What's your advice? Should we file a request? It looks like with 191% increase, it's most likely not going to be accepted. So your advice would probably be to wait another week and see what we're doing. But my guess, I mean, my intuition tells me it's going to be even worse. Probably 1,000%.
So it may be. I think that that 191%, you know, if something's, if, if there's an outbreak that we can work on controlling, that's one thing. But, but say in a long-term care facility, each of those staff members, they need to have their own interview, and they have their own worlds that need evaluation. And so I really, as we are building staff and getting people trained in the Public Health Department, I feel like at least one, if not a few more weeks to get, get people trained up, so that we are ensuring that everybody is, ensuring that over 98% are contacted within the first 24 hours from report, ensuring that we are identifying the outbreaks and controlling them as needed. And I, I don't feel like we are quite there yet. You know, we are still feeling the effects of the Phase One reopening, and I do think that some of these cases are, you know, trickling in from increased interaction from Phase One. And I would recommend that we wait longer to, to get a handle on this before we move forward into more.
Yeah, I noticed that in, in the US, I believe 800 people are dying daily. We're, this is not over with. And it, and it's really scary. And like you said, we need to continue to follow the directions of washing our hands, social distancing, and wearing masks. When I go to Fred Myers, not in Oak Grove, but in Canby, I continually see lots of people without masks, and it really worries me. I, I wear mine, and I wish they would too, because if you watch The Economist talk about the potential V or W, or the swoosh, Nike swoosh, the W is a real possibility if we don't do something and work together to follow the guidelines as much as we can, because in the fall, that would be bad news for this economy if we have to shut down again. So thank you all very much. Is there any other questions? I, I don't see any hands. Oh, Paul?
Yes, appreciate the conversation and the presentation. On Tuesday, I suggested maybe that we actually, for our own sake, for our own gauging of the situation, identify or parse out, you know, the outbreaks that we feel we've got isolated and under control that, and maybe subtract that, so to speak, from the totals, and figure out really what the number is that we maybe cannot contract trace, or contact trace as accurately, and we maybe don't feel we have control over, right? And, and we certainly don't want things to get worse. But we, we did expect that going into Phase One, as I understand it, I'm hearing from people, the OHAs, we know, we expect to see the numbers increase, right, as more activity happens. So I think it's important to put it all in perspective, and without a breakdown of maybe the cases that are isolated to one place, that may be under control, and so on. If we don't have a better definition of the data, you know, a little bit of a drill down, I, I'm kind of concerned that we might be misunderstanding what the data is telling us. So, and of course, then we have the issue with the protest. And, and that's the one I think is one that worries me quite a bit. And I don't, I think we're probably about, what, about a week or two away, maybe, of seeing maybe the numbers and that, and that, that number could actually start to grow, right, as those cases and people circulate. Next to impossible, to some degree, to trace all of those contacts. So that's the part I'm kind of worried. I don't, I don't think we saw this coming. And I think a lot of people expected, or maybe thought that, or I think, so why did you allow that to happen? You being either one city or one county or whatnot. And I don't know that we really have control. I think, Dr. President, just like you kind of said, if someone doesn't want to share what contacts they had, we can't force them to. And so it's really getting back to the social contract of how, how responsible we all are individually, and how we keep people that we know, that we're in contact with, and hold people reasonably, I won't say accountable, but call, you know, it's the same, you know, why aren't you wearing your mask? You should. But I understand all those things. There's not a lot of buts, buts to really talk about here. It's just like, I don't have a problem with waiting until next week, but I would like to see some, 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 a little bit more definition of the data, of what we feel we have isolated and in control of, and, and as far as the outbreaks, and what we don't really have, and see a better breakdown, if that's possible. Thank you.
Ken?
Dr. President, when this first started, the, the intent of the actions that were being taken was to flatten the curve and not overload our hospital system, which we seem to have been successful at, at this point in time. The way you're presenting data now suggests that you've changed your focus from that to top, trying to stop the spread of the disease, period. And I guess my question is, is that a realistic expectation, frankly? I understand we still want to make sure that we don't overload the hospital system, so that the, the systems can deal with those severe cases and save people's lives. But is it realistic to expect that we can actually stop the spread of the disease, first of all?
Thank you. That is, that's an excellent question. And no, without an effective vaccine or effective treatment, then we cannot, well, I don't anticipate us stopping the spread of this disease. When we first went into the stay-home, stay-safe order, it was really a realization that there was community widespread, and the traditional public health tools of isolation, quarantine, case, you know, outbreak control were not enough to stop the spread and prevent over, stop a rapid spread that would then potentially overrun the hospital system. So that still, I believe, is our ultimate goal, is to manage the spread to a point that it is manageable by the health system and by, you know, our, our community in general, to save lives. You know, I think the ultimate goal behind controlling the healthcare overload is life-saving. So we want to ensure that there is the health, the healthcare available for those who need it, and that we actually try to protect the spread amongst the vulnerable populations as much as we can. So whatever we can do as far as our contact management, isolation and quarantine, to prevent spread into vulnerable populations, such as our long-term care facilities, such as our elderly population and other people with vulnerabilities, that is where we can save lives, which is, which is really the, the ultimate goal.
So what that leads me to ask is, given, say, Lane County, who hadn't met the Phase Two metrics even as well as we have up to this point, and they were granted permission to reopen to Phase Two, we are meeting four of the six metrics, if I read the data correctly and heard you correctly, that suggests to me that we might still need to apply to reopen. And maybe we let the OHA tell us yes or no. Your thoughts?
I'll, I'll leave that up to you as the ultimate decision-making, but I feel that waiting another week to help our staff meet the needs of, 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 of the public health tools that we have, make sure that people are well-trained, so that we can do the best that we can with more cases that we will anticipate. I just want to, I would like for us as those responsible for doing everything we can to control the spread and save lives are ready to do that. And I feel that at least, that at least another week would be best for our team.
So are you suggesting that's a week from today, or a week from next week?
Wednesday.
I'd like to see what happens in the next week.
Okay. Thank you. As you probably can guess, we get an awful lot of questions from, from folks out there who are very anxious to, especially small business people, quite frankly. And, you know, obviously very concerned about their economic survival. So this is a very difficult balancing act, quite frankly.
Yes, I understand that.
Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just, just build on something that was just spoken to. And I think, we've got to remember, I think probably one of the most important metrics is really boils down to the admissions, and really about, it gets down to our capacity to treat people, not just for the virus, but also for other emergencies. So we need to make sure we got the hospital capacity. So I think that, to me, is one of the most, that, I mean, that's why we have this phasing. That's why we wanted to flatten the curve. And we can't get in a situation where even the most urgent needs for citizens that are not COVID-related can't even be met. So that's, that's a metric that I just want to be focusing on as well, or most importantly. And while I do agree with Commissioner Humberston's interest in opening into Phase Two, I guess it really, again, boils down to that capacity. And I think unlike Lane County, to some degree, we have more of a regional hospital system of sorts than Lane County does.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. You know, I think we hit this on the head of the nail early, when we start talking about this. We knew this was going to happen. And being prepared for it is, is key to opening. So thank you for your work, and congratulations on your new job, Dr. President. And thank you, Nancy, and everyone working in EOC for the outstanding effort to keep us safe and alive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Gary?
Yes, we're, so we're still on COVID updates, and I'll ask Nancy and Dr. President to please stay. We have a Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, to share with you a potential approval of an addendum number three to Resolution Number 2020-14, declaring a local state of emergency regarding the COVID-19 emergency. So Stephen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. I have your consideration this morning, Addendum Number Three to Resolution Number 2020-14. And what this does, it extends the current state of emergency that this board declared on March 2nd, 2020. It extends it to July 31st, 2020. Currently, Addendum Number Two extends the emergency to the end of June, at which time it would expire. So this addendum would continue the declaration of emergency with all of its associated emergency measures until the end of July. You could extend it during July if necessary, or you could roll it back if things improve during that time period. But this addendum would extend all the terms for essentially another month and a half. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Well, the purpose is to make sure that, under the emergency declaration, we keep track of the expenses, so we can turn it over to FEMA for, for reimbursement. And that is the purpose of this. Correct?
That is, one of the benefits certainly of having a prepared state of emergency is that you are eligible for emergency funding.
All right. Anybody else have questions?
You answered it for me, Jim.
Not anyone. That's why I had.
I wanted the public to hear that. It's important they understand why we do this.
Yeah.
All right. So if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved that we approve Amendment Number Three to Resolution Number 2020-14, declaring a local state of an emergency regarding COVID-19. declaring a local state of an emergency regarding COVID-19. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Mary to please take up our poll.
Sure. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And I, you guys, Nancy, go back to work. More work. All right, with that, Gary, back to you.
One more COVID update. This is from me, first Commissioners. I signed a contract on your behalf, which I did under the emergency declaration 2020-14 due to the COVID-19 emergency that allows me to do that. And that is for the Health, Housing and Human Services Department, it's approval of amendment number three to an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer COVID-19 rent assistance relief under the CARES Act funding. This will allow Clackamas County to receive $2.8 million from the state to be used for staffing and rent assistance for low-income households. No matches required, no county general funds are involved. So I signed this on your behalf yesterday, June 10th. I am seeking your approval to ratify that decision I made.
All right. Any questions? I don't see, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, Gary, I guess my question applies really to everything that's COVID-related that we are seeking relief for or reimbursement for. And this question is, is that how are we doing as far as monitoring the proper protocols and so forth, so we can qualify for these? As you're approving these, I want to make sure that our staff are doing all the proper recording and meeting all the criteria because I don't want to get in a situation where we're not eligible because we didn't do our paperwork correctly. So I, I have confidence and I don't have any problem approving this. But I do want to be assured as we go along that we are closely monitoring that, that administrative work that needs to be done in order to get reimbursement.
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner. Our Emergency Operations Center, led by Nancy Bush, our Finance Department with Elizabeth Comfort, Stephen Council, or Stephen Maccord County Council, are all working collaboratively together to track every cent of funding that comes into the county due to COVID-19. And we are tracking that very carefully and how we spend it, what comes in and what goes out. And we will continue to do that. And one, in case we're ever audited by the federal government, we need to do that. But it's just important that we track this very, very carefully. So yes, I have full confidence in the three teams I just mentioned to help track these funds.
All right. I'm sure that our external auditors will be auditing this anyway in the end.
Clearly, yes.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, second? All right. It's been moved that we ratify the above item or the application for grant for rental assistance for low-income households. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, will you please poll us?
Yes. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is Gary.
Okay, I still have a few more on COVID. First, I'll ask Dylan, please to put on the screen. I'd like to share with you as we have some local businesses and nonprofits who have been generously donating support to our community for COVID-19 relief. Today, we want to recognize Milwaukee-based Dave's Killer Bread. In the month of May, Clackamas County helped facilitate more than 51,000 pounds of food being distributed in our community. And of that amount, 1,700 loaves of bread were donated by Dave's Killer Bread. So a thank you to Dave's Killer Bread and the leadership of Dave's Killer Bread for contributing that contribution to our community. Recognize that. And then finally, Commissioners, wanted to share with you, I am seeking the temporary closure of most county buildings for just one additional week until June 22nd. And then at that point, we will be prepared to allow the public back into most of our departments. Staff has been working really carefully and methodic, method, method, carefully to make sure that we have all the safety protocols in place. So I'll have more information for you next week on what that looks like. But just, I need an additional six, six or seven days for departments to be prepared. So originally, we had said through June 15th, so I'm asking just for one more week. But as of June 22nd, we'll be prepared to allow the public back into our buildings and mostly that we can ensure appropriate safety and social distancing. So I, I guess if, unless you have any major concerns, that's just the direction we're going. One more week on June 22nd. And then we'll have plenty of promotion to the public about what's open when, and continuing to maintain the safety and health of our employees and the public.
You want a motion?
Stephen, do we need a motion?
No.
You're saying no.
Sorry, Gary, you're the delegated authority by the board to manage and administer all county facilities and properties. So this decision is yours. You just ratify the board as a courtesy. I will see this in the office today and there's placards and banners and signs and speed cards. So the facility folks have done an outstanding job.
Thank you. And we're going to prepare a video that we can share with the public and our employees before June 22nd to demonstrate exactly how we are protecting the health and safety of the public and our employees.
I, I want to mention that since last Tuesday I was here, a lot has happened. I was surprised when I came in the building.
Staff's done a fantastic job. Of course, we continue to serve the public. It is mostly remotely, online, by phone. So that has not stopped. But we'll have more, more accessibility to the public as of June 22nd. All right. Seeing no further questions. Those are my updates. So Chair, if you're ready, we're ready to move on to the rest of the agenda.
Yes, let's go ahead and move on to the ordinance. Go ahead, Gary.
Yes. So next Commissioners is reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance. This is adoption of an ordinance ZDO-278 related to a previously approved comprehensive plan amendment, 6.42 acre expansion of Sandy urban growth boundary. We have Nate, Nathan Boderman, County Council, to present.
Thank you, Gary. A good morning, Commissioners. The item this morning is to adopt an ordinance related to an expansion of the city of Sandy's urban growth boundary. The expansion area includes nearly six and a half acres, like Gary mentioned, is intended to accommodate primarily a new road extension, a new public park, and new stormwater facilities, which are all associated with planned residential development in the area. Specifically, what this ordinance will do is amend the county's comprehensive plan so that expansion area of the city's urban growth boundary is accurately reflected in the county's comprehensive plan and in its maps. The county's planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on March 9th, 2020, and at that time voted 5-0 to recommend that this board approve that expansion request. The Board of County Commissioners scheduled a public hearing on this matter on May 6th, 2020, which was then continued until last week, June 3rd, to consider the application and the recommendation of the planning commission. At the meeting last week, you'll probably recall, you voted 5-0 unanimously in favor of approving the expansion request as recommended by the planning commission and staff. The board then directed staff to prepare the findings and the draft and ordinance to finalize the decision. So that's what we're doing here today. The ordinance before you will approve the amendments to the comprehensive plan related to that expansion of Sandy's urban growth boundary. Planning staff has included findings supporting that decision, which have been attached as an exhibit to the ordinance, which is included with your materials. So with that, it certainly staff's recommendation that you adopt the ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the materials.
Any questions? Don't see any hands up. So with that, I would see. Ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I approve, I, I move that we adopt ordinance ZDO-278 related to a previously approved comprehensive plan amendment in Sandy.
We need to read it by title only.
Right. So I, I move, I move we read ZDO-278 by title only.
I said moved and seconded that we read ZDO-278 by title only. Any I'll ask the clerk, clerk, any other questions? Ask the clerk to poll us.
Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I'd ask the clerk to read ZDO-278 by title.
Okay, ordinance, ZDO-278, a comprehensive plan amendment, 6.42 acres expansion of Sandy's urban growth boundary.
Uh, let's see. I'd ask for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved that we adopt ZDO-278, a comprehensive plan amendment, 6.42 acres expansion Sandy urban growth boundary as previously approved at the January 3rd, 2020 land use hearing. Any further discussion? With that, I'd ask the clerk to please poll.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The next is another public hearing. And Gary, what is it?
Yes, Commissioners, this is a first reading of an ordinance amending county code, chapter 2.15, county internal auditor. We have Jody Cochrane, Chief Audit Executive for Clackamas County, to present. As she's coming online here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning. Yes, again, for the record, my name is Jody Cochrane. I'm the county internal auditor. Briefly, I will read the staff's background and recommendation for this amendment addition to the county code. The county internal audit function was established by the board in 2015 when you authorized and appointed a county internal auditor and approved the internal audit charter. County internal audit is an independent function designed to add value and help Clackamas County achieve its objectives by bringing a systematic designed approach to evaluating and improving the effectiveness of risk management and control processes. County internal audit independence is enhanced by the dual reporting structure. The county internal auditor, its chief audit executive reports administratively to the elected county treasurer and functionally to an internal audit oversight committee. This structure encourages direct and unrestricted access to all things Clackamas County. It also supports a service environment free from conditions that threaten my ability to maintain objectivity. The value of internal audit services depends on its independence and objectivity. The Institute of Internal Auditors International Standards for the Professional Practice of Internal Auditing require the internal audit function, quote, "have freedom from conditions that threaten the ability of the internal audit activity to carry out internal audit responsibilities in an unbiased manner," end quote. This includes protections in place to safeguard the audit organization. Eight of our, of eight local city and county audit shops have established this independence and this function within their county code or city code. Those include Multnomah County, Washington County, Metro, City of Portland, Clark County, Washington, Deschutes County, Jackson County, and Lane County. Clackamas County internal audit is not currently designated in code. The internal oversight committee approved the proposed language codifying this resource in its May 6th, 2020 meeting and recommended the code amendment be presented to the board for consideration. This matter was brought to you at your May 12th board policy session. Staff respectfully requests that the board hold a public hearing for the first reading of this ordinance and provide any requested changes and then schedule for a second reading on Thursday, June 25th for the adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of our chief audit executive? Don't see any hands. Okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask Dylan Blaylock, PG, from PGA to moderate this portion. And do we have anybody interested in this subject?
I will check. Thank you, Chair Bernard, again. Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs. I'll coordinate both public comment for this specific public hearing and later on for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, amending the county code regarding the internal auditor, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand function on Zoom. If you're on the phone and you want to give a comment for this specific public hearing, please hit star nine. Again, we will open up public comments on any topic related to county business in a little while. But if you have a comment related to this specific one, the internal auditor code change, please select the raise hand or again, star nine for that individual who's on the phone. Seeing none, Chair.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Anybody?
Chair, I, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. Ask the clerk to please poll.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I'd ask the clerk to sign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance, ordinance number 05-2020. And it's an ordinance amending the Clackamas County Code by adding chapter 2.15, county internal auditor.
Thank you. And I'll announce that the second reading will be, well, actually, I guess I should, any further discussion? Do Commissioners have any proposed changes to the amendment of the draft ordinance?
Chair, I don't have any changes and I, but I do have a little bit of discussion I want to add. I don't, just want to just let everyone know that neither Jody Cochrane or Brian Nava, our auditor, internal auditor, or our treasurer are aware of what I'm going to say this morning, but they probably heard and you probably already heard similar comments. I just think it's an appropriate time. I'd re-miss if I didn't share these, these, this comment. Through the history of this, and Chair Bernard, I, I appreciate your support on the internal audit committee recommending and be part of the recommendation to hire the internal auditor. And I do know that the previous treasurer, Sherry Anderson, was, you know, pretty well was the tip of the spear in leading the effort to get an internal auditor. And it, and it, it sat there for a long time as a, something to do, but we never funded. I learned of that and, and subsequently in my earlier years on the commission, I pushed and the commission approved hiring the first internal, independent internal auditor. As I mentioned, at previous budget processes and even this last budget process, that we don't have enough capacity in the internal auditors. And I do know from budgetary reasons that the treasurer and the, and the administrator worked together to come up with, you know, maybe we'll wait till next year. And during the budget, budget committee discussions, it was, well, where does the money come from? Further work or further information that I have learned is that if we compare ourselves to other counties, no matter what metric you use, we are underrepresented. And I, and I have some of that data. I don't have it here this morning. I don't prepare to share that specific data. But we really need the work. And as I mentioned earlier, when we approved or ratified the item, the administrator as far as the the COVID-19 emergency funds that we're applying for and we're implementing, there's a lot of work to be done. And we're just, we're just, they're just understaffed. You all asked or suggested if anything came forward, and I know that this is probably not the appropriate time, but I think it's the appropriate time to, to mention that, you know, there are ways of funding this without actually going after or finding funds per se, that it could be funded by or via allocated costs, or it could be funded by actually assigning those costs to the particular department that incurred the cost. So there are ways of doing it without compromising the general fund. And I think it'd probably be appropriate to look at the latter. Maybe that is assigning the cost to the, to the department where, where the work was actually incurred. But I just wanted to just, at least for everyone's adification, say that, no, we need to move past this. I think Chair Bernard, you know, to move past this. I think Chair Bernard, um, you know, um, you know, in the coming months, we have an opportunity, you have an opportunity as well to, to help lead the opportunity to actually pave the way for the next, uh, internal auditor. So thank you for allowing me the time.
All right. I gotta make sure I didn't get lost here. Uh, all right. With that, I'll announce that the second reading, uh, will be Thursday, June 25th, 2020, at the Board's regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 AM. Now, and with that, thank you, uh, Jody and Brian for joining us. And I'd like to announce that the Board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners on vacation. Now, convene as Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District for the next item, and Gary, what is that next item?
Yes, this is also a public hearing, approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Supplemental Budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2019-2020. Elizabeth Comfort, Finance Director, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. This is Elizabeth Comfort, your interim Finance Director. And, uh, yes, we have a resolution before you for supplemental budget, and we bring this to a public hearing for two purposes typically. One is if the appropriation request is greater than 10% or if there's a category appropriation change, which is the case today. Currently in our Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District budget, we only appropriated for special payments, which is a pass-through. The initial intent was to receive additional funding and use our savings in this account for a new construction. Uh, however, we're not doing that, uh, at this time, but we are still gaining interest with that, the savings that they have been, uh, collecting over the years very well. So today, we are actually transferring $5,000 as our request from that special payments line and creating a new category, not new to the county, but new for this particular budget of material and services. And the goal is to capture those expenditures for the investment fees that we incur from the Treasury Department. We just had, uh, Brian Nava on the, on the call here. Uh, in the past, what we've done is we've expensed those treasury fees against interest accrued, and so we've been earning interest, as I mentioned, on their savings. And for best practices, which we are moving towards, uh, every day in our finance department and tracking expenditures, we really need to identify and call out any expenses through an expenditure line. So today, this, um, resolution is to add a material and services appropriation line and move 5,000 from the special payments appropriation line up into the material and services to identify and to, um, call out those treasury expenditures that we have, no greater than 5,000 for fiscal year 1920.
And thank you. Do any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? Don't see any hands. We will open the public hearing and I'd ask Dylan Blaylock, uh, from PGA to moderate this portion.
Great. Thank you, Chair Bernard. Again, if any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, Extension and 4-H Service District Supplemental Budget, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. And if you are on the phone, I don't see anyone on the phone. So, um, we'll open up public comment on any topic related to county business in a little bit, but again, if you have a comment for this specific public hearing, please use the raise hand button now. Seeing none, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Supplemental Budget greater than 10% and budget reduction fiscal year 2019-2020.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and second that we approve a resolution for Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Supplemental Budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2019-2020. And ask the clerk to please poll us.
Okay, um, Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. With that, I'll announce that the Board will now adjourn as the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District and reconvene as Water Environmental Service Board for the next item. Gary, what is the next item?
Yes, this is a board discussion item, approval of the Regional Wastewater System Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement. We have Chris Story, Assistant Director of Water Environment Services, to present.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today to celebrate what is in many ways a milestone, uh, the happy culmination of years and years of discussion and dialogue. So, uh, we appreciate the time on your agenda to, uh, mark that opportunity. This is an issue that has lingered for quite a while. Excuse me. Uh, this current solution was reached because the Board, uh, several years ago initiated and reached out to our partners to offer the Oregon Consensus Process, which is a third-party facilitator that would come in and help everybody understand and find a path forward. That process started in the fall of 2018 with the survey of the broader community and stakeholders regarding what their interests were, and then culminated in the formation of a stakeholder group that represented those interests to go through a fairly robust process that included a joint learning exercise where both West and the cities came forward and talked about the regional wastewater system, um, an appreciative inquiry where those, uh, stakeholders were able to express their interests, a dialogue with the requirement that agreement had to be unanimous about what a solution could be. Then ultimately, a mutual drafting of the agreement that is before you that represents that unanimous agreement of what a path forward should be for regional wastewater. Uh, so this is, uh, a happy moment, and I did want to pause, if you don't mind, to specifically recognize the participants of that, uh, dedicated group of individuals who helped bring this forward, including, uh, BCC Chair Bernard, Commissioner Paul Savis, Gladstone Mayor Tammy Stimple, Johnson City Mayor Vince Ballard, Oregon City Mayor Dan Holliday, Westland Mayor Russ Axelrod, Happy Valley Councillor Markley Drake, Milwaukee Councillor Angel Falconer, West Advisory Committee Chair Diana Helm, West Advisory Committee Vice Chair Greg DiLoreto, West Advisory Committee Member Tessa Denell, West Advisory Committee Member Ron Weigel, and West Director Greg Geist. There certainly, I will note, uh, Kevin also did, uh, quite a bit of yeoman's work in the background along with Shelley to help make everything work smoothly. This agreement was, uh, through the hard work of that group produced. It's been shared with, uh, our six partner cities and the, the West Advisory Committee. They've all given their nod at the approach that it represents, and the six cities have actually approved it. It, uh, is attached to your staff report, but just to highlight a few key details, every city will have an elected representative on the West Advisory Committee, and that representative is chosen by the city council, not the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, the scope of the committee will be a regional discussion to ensure that the impacts of West of the cities and of the cities' work in their collection systems on West system are recognized in one forum. Uh, that committee is directed to address certainly all the major issues such as rates, fees, system development charges, and mutual investment strategies. Infiltration inflow reduction is certainly going to be probably the next major project that committees can be, take. It also allows the opportunity for the elected officials to break apart and offer a separate recommendation to this board if they disagree with the majority, uh, opinion from the West Advisory Committee so that you have a direct feedback from those specific jurisdictions. And it will last for a couple of years, but has the intention of lasting, uh, for a much longer period of time, but it does have a check-in provision. With that, I'm available for questions or, uh, happily a resolution.
Uh, Chris, I gotta thank you also as, uh, uh, all the work you've done to make this occur. Uh, one, one clarification, when you said every city would have a member on that board, every city within the district would have a member on that board, because I don't want Mulala anesthetized in that committee.
Uh, every city that receives wastewater service through the West system, and there are six.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Paul, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to, um, yeah, just to thank everyone, uh, Chris and all the people that he mentioned, uh, for their participation in, uh, in being able to pull this, uh, pull this through to completion and get agreement. Um, it is, after all the years I've been following this, 23 years, I believe, 23, 24 years I've been following, um, the politics and the stresses between both Tri-City Service District, CCSD, and the county and some of the cities as time goes, um, it's been, um, challenging at times, uh, but we're in a good place today, and I appreciate all that. As I kind of mentioned Tuesday, um, the, I think the areas where we need to think about it as, as signees and also stewards in recognition of the two permits, the National Pollution Discharge, um, permit and also the MS4 permit, that, um, we have some work to do as regards to surface water, uh, flood control, and most especially, um, INI, which is, um, uh, infiltration from broken pipes that get into our sewers, our, our sewer system, and then through the plant and then discharge into the river. And the more that we allow INI, uh, and as, as growth happens, uh, the more that that discharge into the river, that that zone is impacted and gets larger. And I know that there's a lot of technicalities behind that, but all to say that, um, I think we have an opportunity to move forward. I'm hoping, and some willingness to work on create, fixing some of those INI issues in, in, uh, and the, within the two districts in the area affecting all these cities. And, um, I think by doing so cooperatively, uh, that there are economies of scale that can save the, the residents of all of those districts or cities or unincorporated areas, save people a lot of money if we work together. And I was hoping we'd get a little bit more progress on that, but, you know, we will. Um, I'm confident we'll get there someday, but I'm hoping that work, uh, can move along at a swifter rate than it currently is. So with that, again, thank you to everyone, and, uh, this is a great day.
Yeah, also, the, the whole Board, thank you. We had, uh, made some bold moves, uh, that gave, put us in this position and gave us the ability to make this agreement. And I honestly thought that the regional solutions thing was a waste of time, and I'm happy to be proven wrong. So, uh, it's, it's great. So with that, I don't see any other hands. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Regional Wastewater System Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and second that we approve the Regional Wastewater System Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement. Any further discussion? With that, I'll ask the clerk to please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item, Gary?
Yes, so we had scheduled Commissioners another board discussion item for approval of a resolution denouncing racism, condemning violence, and countering, uh, system, systemic discrimination in Clackamas County. And I'm actually recommending Commissioners that you postpone this item until next week, and let me tell you why. Um, we have all been struggling to find the right words to express our values and beliefs around racial discrimination in Clackamas County, uh, and it's tough. It's tough to find the right words, and most importantly, to demonstrate the right actions of how we will eliminate and eradicate racism in all its forms in our community. We have had several drafts we have shared with you Commissioners, and you have proposed your own drafts as well, but we really haven't taken the time for you to have a, a, a good public discussion on the various drafts to make sure that you're using the right words at the right time. You all have expressed your heartfelt thoughts on racism last week, earlier this week, and you will have a chance today as well. So simply, I'm suggesting to postpone this topic so that you can have a full discussion next Tuesday at your issue session, and then have a final document that you can approve next Thursday at your business meeting. Uh, so that is my recommendation to you if you agree with that.
You good with that?
Yeah, let's work on it.
All right. Great.
We'll bring that back for you next week. Uh, that is the end of the discussion items, and finally, next is your consent, I'm sorry, not finally, but next is Consent Agenda, and I'll ask Mary, the clerk, to please go forward.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have, uh, approval of a professional services agreement with Oregon Community Health Information Network for billing services for the Clackamas Health Centers. Approval of Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Sandy for the Southeast Sandy ADA Improvement Project. Approval of Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Gladstone, Gladstone Senior Center to provide older American Act services for Clackamas County residents. Um, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Oregon City Pioneer Community Center to provide older American month services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a revenue contract with Trillium Community Health Plan. An approval to apply for a continuum of care homelessness demonstration program funding for prevention, diversion, and access services for youth. Uh, under Finance, we have approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County Supplemental Budget less than 10% and transfers for fiscal year 2019-2020. Approval of a public improvement contract with Cascade in, in this industrial services to provide exterior masonry cleaning and sealing of multiple buildings. Under Elected Officials, we have approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the City of Milwaukee to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2020-2021. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas Community Corrections and the City of Oregon City to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2020-2021. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County, County Community Corrections and the City of Wilsonville to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2020-2021. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Metro to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2020-2021. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Clackamas Community College to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2020-2021. Under Business and Community Services, approval of an allocation certification, certification amendment with the Oregon State Marine Board for Maintenance Assistance Program, 2020-2021 funding. Under Technology Services, approval of a non-disclosure agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Verizon Business Network Services. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of addendum to lease agreement of Clackamas Elementary School building and grounds between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Cascade Heights Charter School. And underwater environment services agreement between Water Environment Services and Parametrics Inc. for the Three Creeks Flood Plane Enhancement Project. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Mary. Uh, do any Commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's moved and second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Mary, please poll the Commission.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and we're on to citizen communication, and Dylan Blaylock, uh, from Public and Government Affairs will moderate this portion. Dylan.
So, thank you, Chair Bernard. This is the time of the meeting for general comment related to any county issue. If any attendees would like to provide a comment, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom, or if you're on the phone, but we don't have anyone on the phone. Uh, Chair, I also have two emails thus far to relay after we take any Zoom or phone calls. Uh, I'll also remind our audience that you can check county updates related to the pandemic at any time at clackamas.us/coronavirus. Seeing no Zoom. Seeing no Zoom or phone calls, I will move on to the emails that we received. Again, we have two. After I end with the first one, I will look to see if any commissioners have raised hands if you want to make a comment. The first is from Les Poole of Gladstone, uh, with the subject Damascus Reveals Metro Failure. It was a grand plan. Metro, the regional government that reigns over local cities and counties would satisfy the state requirement for a twenty-year land supply by creating a new city. The small community of Damascus would accommodate massive population growth and become a symbol for the future. In two thousand and five, the city incorporated and the residents began a frustrating planning journey that resulted in a failed disincorporation vote in November twenty thirteen. Oregon law places a high requirement for voter turnout in order for a city to dissolve. After falling short in twenty thirteen, anxious disincorporation advocates turned to the state legislature. Rather than amend the existing law, Representative Fagan sponsored HB four zero two nine, a bill that dramatically reduced the number of votes required for disincorporation and for voter turnout. I testified against HB four zero two nine because the existing disincorporation law could have been reasonably amended. The low bar set by HB four zero two nine was legally challenged by a local resident, James DeYoung. Initially, a judge ruled against him, but in May of this year, the Oregon Court of Appeals ruled the HB twenty twenty-nine was unconstitutional because the legislature had imposed its will on a city when it lacked authority to do so. The decision made it clear that Damascus was still a city and that its Home Rule Charter should not have been circumvented. In spite of the ruling, disincorporation promoters turned to the legislature again. Representative Fagan responded by sponsoring SB two two six, a bill that effectively ignores the appeals court decision. After SB two two six was approved by the legislature in June, Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard ironically hailed Fagan as a quote hero. As expected, Mr. DeYoung filed a legal challenge to SB two two six that will be heard by the Oregon Supreme Court by the end of the year. Regardless of the outcome, isn't it time to end the practice of inserting the legislature into complex land use issues? History has shown it's unreasonable to expect the legislators to achieve good results in those situations. Damascus is an expensive and painful reminder that the future of the region should not be dictated by Metro. Need for more local control is glaring. There is plenty of evidence that the path to disincorporation was paved by Metro. Repeatedly turning to the legislature and courts doesn't address the need to hold Metro accountable and make changes in how the regional government applies Oregon's land use plan. Clackamas County is experiencing rapid growth as thousands of new residents are moving to our special place. They will come regardless of whether or not Damascus survives the Supreme Court decision. Watch the fate of Damascus closely and be aware we cannot allow Metro to fail us again. Les Poole of Gladstone, Oregon. All right, moving on to the second email, uh, from Charles Galia, resident of Carver. Chair Bernard, Commissioners Humberston, Fisher, Schrader and Savis. Before you is a resolution denouncing racism, condemning violence and countering systemic discrimination. Thank you for taking this step. I strongly encourage you to consider working directly with black and African Americans in your community. But the oneness should be on you, not those organizations or even an office to teach you. The issues belongs to white people. Systemic racism needs to be addressed, obviously systematically. That means more than an office. Every policy, program and interaction needs to be assessed. Training, while helpful, doesn't change organizational culture. Please be cognizant that using the existing hierarchy that is prone to suggest to you that things are going well is unlikely to aggressively seek out real learning opportunities and report them for resolution. While an office would be helpful, the lines of accountability need to be direct and create assurances of confidentiality. The phrase black or other people of color should be black and other people of color and include indigenous people. I also suggest including task forces, boards and commissions, the organizations you contract with and all local jurisdictions and special service districts, not just cities. Be examined and strongly encouraged to examine themselves and when they find areas to improve and then act. Again, Charles Galia, resident of Carver. Okay, and last call for any attendees with us via Zoom. If you would like to raise your hand now, that lets me know you have a comment. Going once, going twice. Seeing no more, Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to the county administrator for any updates he'd like to give.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'd like to share some, uh, as I do each week, commissioners, on the good work of our staff. Uh, first, Clackamas County Social Services has partnered with Bridging Cultures, a nonprofit organization based in Canby to deliver food boxes to the Latinx, Latinx community. Bridging Cultures volunteers have collaborated with social services to deliver a total of four hundred and ninety-five food boxes to three hundred and ninety-one different households, primarily in the Canby and Malala areas. In total, this food from the Oregon Food Bank has helped feed over two thousand one hundred people in our community. Thank you to both Bridging Cultures and our Social Services Division of Health, Housing and Human Services. Uh, next, also Health, Housing and Human Services, our housing authority, um, reports kindnesses from our community for our residents at the Hillside Manor Housing Project in Milwaukee. When the COVID nineteen pandemic began, a group of volunteers from the Hillside Manor decided to make it a safer place by continually, continuously cleaning the elevator buttons and other high-touch areas in the nine-story building. Our housing authority provided all the supplies for these volunteers. This ongoing important project illustrates the real sense of community among the residents to look out for each other and take care of each other. Uh, so thank you to our volunteers at the Hillside Manor and to our housing authority staff for helping to support that effort. Uh, a few other quick updates. Next week, commissioners, uh, you will hopefully adopt the county's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. That is at your business meeting next Thursday, June eighteenth. You will have thirteen public hearings over the thirteen components of the county budget. So just a reminder, that will be next Thursday, a planned for a long meeting. Uh, Dylan, be prepared. Well, hopefully we'll have good public comment as you finalize the county's budget for next fiscal year. With a reminder, that is, as you know, a budget at this moment in time, there will likely be multiple supplemental budgets during the year uh, as we learn more about our revenue, uh, challenges, uh, primarily. Uh, uh, next commissioners, as you know, June is Pride Month, um, in our state, in our nation. And this Sunday would have been the Portland Pride Parade, uh, which of course has been postponed or canceled this year due to COVID nineteen. Uh, but during Pride Month, we recognize and celebrate, um, our LGBTQ, um, employees and families and those in our community, uh, that we value, recognize and support you. And so I just wanted to make that statement that we, uh, thank our, our, our LGBTQ community and we celebrate and recognize them this month, but always. And then finally, on racial injustice, I know that you've talked about this commissioners, as have I, but I just want to say as, as county administrator, uh, there is zero tolerance for racism at Clackamas County among our employees or in the community. And as an organization, uh, under your leadership commissioners, uh, we will take actions to support our employees and support our communities in working to eradicate racism within our organization and in our communities. So I will do my part as your staff leader to support you in doing just that. Uh, that is my update for this week, commissioners.
Thank you, Gary, and on to Commissioner Communication. First up is Paul Savis.
Uh, thank you. A couple of things, um, I think probably the most obvious that's on the forefront of all of our minds is what's happening, um, uh, around the country, um, in response to, uh, the passing, um, the tragic death of George Floyd and what's actually going on around the world. And, uh, I heard the public comment from one member, um, that was read to us. Um, I concur with a lot of what was there. I'm anxious actually, Dylan, if you could pass that on in writing so I can actually, um, study that a little bit deeper. I caught most of it. Um, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve a lot of my comments for, uh, for, uh, for next week on this topic when we actually approve the resolution, but I do want to say that, um, you know, the impacts, um, uh, to the black African American community, uh, in this country are, are unique in their ways and, and of course, um, it's really been brought to the forefront. But I think as we look towards how we resolve some of these things, um, we have to also realize that there are other people of color, um, the indigenous, uh, folks, uh, um, as well, that are also impacted and also have suffered. I think they are part of the solution. And I, I don't want to take the, not necessarily the spotlight. I don't want to take away the, the, um, the issue in and of itself of the black African community whatsoever. Um, but I, again, I just want to restate, I think that as we look towards solutions, we need to make sure that we involve everyone because everyone is involved in this, um, especially when it looks, uh, we talk about solutions. So, um, I wanted to just put that out there. Um, and again, I look forward to discussion on Tuesday and also look forward to the discussion, um, on Thursday as well when we, uh, have a resolution. Um, lastly, um, for, for me this morning, um, is the budget. Uh, you know, Gary, uh, as administrator has just mentioned that we're gonna approve the budget next week and I kind of touched on as far as the internal auditor a little bit, uh, about opportunities there, I think, and whether that's done, you know, this year, hopefully this year, hopefully soon, we can actually integrate that. I want to say that, uh, from a budgetary standpoint, that this is going to be the third budget in a row that, um, I knowingly recognize is not structurally sustainable, it's not structurally balanced. And, um, I know I've spoken quite a bit on it and it'll be a long meeting next week. Um, but I do want to say that, you know, we, we have to, um, at least direct our staff and make a commitment to how we plan, um, to resolve this, to get to a structurally balanced budget. We owe our staff that. And I think that is probably one of my most, um, my, my biggest struggle with the budget, um, coming out of the budget committee meeting with the other five members is that we have, we gave, we had not, we're not giving staff the clear direction um, uh, that they need to, uh, to, and a timeframe in order to achieve that. And there needs to be a plan. And I, I, I will, I will not be quiet on this. Um, I, I, I will be outspoken on this. And I'll go into great more, I'll go into greater detail next week. There's parts of the budget I'm gonna approve next week. There's part, there's a budget that I won't approve next week. Um, and because of this very reason, we need to actually, again, give staff the clear direction they need to, to get to a structurally sound budget as soon as possible. Um, so with that, I'll close my comments for today. Thank you.
You can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's not normally in my nature to make, uh, negative comments, um, but I am just gonna simply say that I am very disappointed that we have not made a public statement as a board for the two weeks, uh, regarding the issues of racial inequity that have been going on around this country. I believe we should have been in the leadership position and made that decision and made the, that statement two weeks ago. Um, I realize that, uh, the majority of the board wishes to wordsmith this, which I don't think needed to be done. I do believe it should be all-inclusive, uh, and I think that we should have made the decision two weeks ago. Uh, that being said, um, I would like to talk about some positive things that are occurring and will occur. Um, I've met with the, uh, tourism board and interestingly enough, while the predictions of revenues were at ten percent of normal, uh, they actually came in at, uh, twenty percent. So that actually s- seems to be improving uh, in terms of the transit occupancy tax, rev, tax revenues that, um, that were expected. Um, some of the businesses are beginning to experience some growth. Um, water sports, uh, activities and sales have gone up. Um, and that board has decided to keep their same officers, uh, for the next year. So that should continue to provide some continuity in our tourism board. And hopefully we will be able to begin to hire people back as the revenues can support that. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Gary Schmidt's efforts to provide some administrative support for, uh, Sam, Samara and, uh, the other employee that remain with us in tourism. Um, very much, I, I realize that's going to be burdensome for some of our, our staff, but, uh, I do appreciate your, your efforts to support that. Uh, I'd like to remind people that some of the farmers markets are now opening. Uh, Oregon City Farmers Market is open on Saturdays, Milwaukee Farmers Market on Sunday, Westland's Farmers Market on Wednesdays in the afternoon and evening, and I encourage people to go. All of them are structuring this in a way that makes it relatively safe for people to go, maintain distances and are encouraging people to wear masks, but this is an opportunity for you to support your local businesses by going to the farmers markets. And lastly, as I said last week, regardless of what we do, uh, with respect to saying words about, um, equity, diversity and inclusion, the actual things that we do are what really count, not just the words. Um, I'm pleased to, to announce that, uh, the Carpenters Union has contacted us. Martha is familiar with this, uh, regarding, um, pathways to trades for people of color, uh, and women in our region. And that we'll be having discussions about that and hopefully we will have the opportunity to adopt that program as part of our ongoing construction plans for buildings, et cetera, throughout Clackamas County. Um, actually putting to people, people to work in family wage jobs. We'll do more towards getting people out of poverty than anything else government can do. Much of what we do is patchwork because we only have so much money and that's understandable. Um, so wherever we can make sure that people actually have good family wage jobs and become self-reliant, that is the real solution to poverty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and next up is Martha. Your mic.
Yeah, well, thank you Chair Bernard and, uh, thank you colleagues. I'd like to mention, uh, as well, Clackamas Workforce Partnership can, as we work through the C two P two, uh, issues. That is something that I think we, we can adopt as a framework. And it appears as if they will be our entity that will help us implement, uh, that process as we move forward with that. Um, yeah, so I don't usually talk about this, but, uh, my youngest son is a person of color. Um, and we've had our, our difficulties with the way he's been treated through the years with racial profiling and, uh, other incidents. So I actually take most of the extremely personally. And so what I wanted to share today, one of the things I did was, um, you know, George Floyd just had his funeral. And, uh, it was actually quite a remarkable, uh, event. And his family has a lawyer. And the name of the lawyer is, is Mr. Ben Crump. He has also been a lawyer for Ahmond, Barbary, Attachiana Jefferson, Brianna Taylor. Uh, these are other African Americans who have been murdered. And he is becoming one of the foremost lawyers dealing with these issues nationally as well as internationally. So I'd like to read the statement he made at the funeral as he was with George's family and, uh, his children and wife and everything else. This is what he has to say. "Let's take a breath collectively for all of the marginalized and disenfranchised and dehumanized people, whether black, brown, white or red, who were killed unjustifiably, who were killed unnecessarily and who were killed senselessly," Crump said. "Because they are American citizens, one, they are human beings, two, and finally, we should all remember they are children of God." So for me, this is a time of deep reflection, um, about what our pathway is going to do moving forward, uh, with how we deal with the disenfranchisement of our neighbors, our families, our children, uh, and, and everyone who is dealing with discrimination. And I'm sorry, Commissioner, that you're disappointed, Commissioner Humberston, that we haven't moved ahead yet. But I feel very strongly that we have to get this right. And I think the message from George Floyd's family and his lawyer, the lawyer for the family, at least actually for me, reflects it all. And their message is a message of peace and non-violence. And their message is a message of peace and non-violence in the face of violence. And I'm a member of the Fellowship of Reconciliation, and through that organization, we'll continue to work on those issues. So that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. I think that this is a very important time of reflection, time of listening, a time of leaning in, a time of seeking first to understand before being understood, and it's an important process. It's a very, very important process. So I appreciate my colleagues. I appreciate our employees at Clackamas County. I so appreciate everyone who's spent time over the last time just talking with us and sharing with us and, and having us evolve together. So we will continue the dialogue. That's how change happens, and it's important.
Is that it? Okay. Well, first off, I'd like to congratulate Mary Jo Cartesania. She finished up her master's in public administration. Good job. Finished up during the virus. I want to thank Sonia for recommending the Netflix 13th. Pretty amazing. Got to ask that we engage. So I, you know, I've spent a lot of time thinking about what's going on, and I've got a poem. I think that Reverend Sharpton during George Floyd's funeral said something that I really liked. And have any of you ever tried to read a book and decided to skip to the end and see what happens? That's what Reverend Sharpton said he did. He cheated and skipped to the end. And, you know, we've been reading this book for 400 years. And during that time, a lot has happened. And this is the Ballad of Birmingham by Dudley Randall. "Mother dear, may I go downtown instead of out to play and march the streets of Birmingham in a freedom march today? No, baby, you may not go, for the dogs are fierce and wild. The clubs and hoses, guns and jails aren't good for little children. But, mother, I want to go alone. Other children will go with me and march the streets in Birmingham to make our country free. No, baby, no, you may not go, for I fear the guns will fire, but you may go to church instead and sing in the children's choir." She has, she has combed and brushed her night dark hair and bathed rose, bathed rose petal sweet and down white gloves on her small brown hands and white shoes on her feet. The mother smiled to know that her child was in a sacred place, but that smile would not last long. Be the last smile to come to her face, for when she heard the explosion, her eyes grew wet and wild. She raced down the street to Birmingham, calling for her child. She clawed through the bits of glass and brick and lifted out a shoe. Oh, here's the shoe my baby wore. But, baby, where are you? With that, you're adjourned. Thank you.